Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm David Gerns, Chairman of the Timberlane District School Board Budget Committee. I'd like to open this open hearing now. Ms. Curtin, would you call the role for the budget committee?
Alan David.
Here.
I mean Doobie.
Here.
We do be David Gerns.
Here.
Dan Guy. Julie Hammond.
Here.
John Hughes.
Here.
Michael Mascola.
Here.
Sean O'Neil.
Here.
Jim Paul.
Here.
Also seated at the committee this evening are Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Earl Metzler, and Business Administrator Jeffrey Gadd.
Would you please call a roll for the school board?
Peter Bilo. Ryan Boyle.
Here.
Stephanie Doobie.
Here.
Kim Thera.
Here.
Donnie Green.
Here.
Dan Guy. Sue Sherman. Eric Gregory Spira.
Here.
Have your board.
Thank you. We would all stand, please, with the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible).
We'll review once again the purpose of the rules of this meeting. Review the first and second, schedule for the first and second sessions of annual meeting. And then discuss the operating and the default budget. Capital Reserve Fund article. An article pertaining agents for capital reserve fund. General acceptance of reports. And then a discussion of the article on the artificial turf, which is presented by petition. The purpose of this meeting is to present the preliminary proposed 2018-2019 Timberlane Regional School District budget appropriations to the public. To allow for public testimony and questions on the budget prior to finalization by the budget committee. After public hearing, the public budget committee will finalize the budget and present it for presentation at the delivery session. Only the budget committee members may make motions to change the budget at the public Some basic ground rules. I ask you all to silence your phones ringing as destruction that can be heard throughout the hall. Come to the microphones. There's a microphone here. And there's another one, I think there's another one on the other side. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized before speaking. State your name and the town for the record. Be respectful. Profanity and personal attacks, rude or slanderous remarks are not tolerated. Offenders will be asked to leave the building. Comments shall be limited to the topic at hand. Speakers will be allocated allotted up to five minutes to make their statement, except to the citizen's position presenter will have ten minutes. Allow those who have not spoken an opportunity to do so before offering additional comment. If you're returning to the microphone, it must be to discuss something new and not a repetition of previous comments. The chair reserves the right to discontinue comment on a topic in order to move the meeting Mr. Powell, would you read the, about the first session of the annual meeting?
You are hereby notified to meet at the Timberlane High School, 36 Greenhow Road, Plastow, New Hampshire, on Thursday, the eighth day of February 2018 at 7:00 PM. This session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of warrant articles. Warrant articles may be amended, subject to the following limitations. Warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law shall not be amended. Warrant articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot for a final vote on the main motion as amended. And no warrant article shall be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article.
Mrs. Doobie, would you read the slide on the second session?
Second session of the annual meeting, voting. Voting on warrant articles will be conducted by official ballot to be held in conjunction with the town meeting. Voting to be held on Tuesday, the 13th day of March 2018, at the Town Election Bowls in Atkinson, Danville, Plastow, and Sandown, New Hampshire. Atkinson, voting will be conducted at the Atkinson Community Center from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. Danville, voting will be conducted at the Danville Community Center from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM. Plastow, voting will be conducted at Pollard School from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And in Sandown, voting will be conducted at the Sandown Town Hall from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, would you read the Article II?
Article II, operating budget. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District raise an appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant was amended by vote for a session for the purposes set forth herein. Total, seventy-one million, seven hundred and fifteen, fifty-nine, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be seventy-one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and six dollars, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Timberlane Regional School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013, Roman Number X and XBI, to take up the issue or revise our operating budget only. Note, warrant Article II, the operating budget, does not include appropriations proposed under any other warrant articles. Majority vote required. Thank you.
In the budget process, Mrs. Hammond, would you read this slide, please?
Budget process. Developed in accordance to applicable New Hampshire statutes, RSA's 32, 33, and 195. Incorporation of the committee's mission statement. The budget committee will develop a fiscally sound annual budget that will optimally meet the needs of the district by working with the district personnel and consultation with the school board. Throughout the budget process, the budget committee will take into consideration district taxpayers as well as support for staff, rigor evaluation, and accountability initiatives that drive student achievement.
Continue, please.
Review of actual expenditures in prior years, consideration for staffing and enrollment projections, deliberation of capital improvements requested within the capital improvement plan, collaboration with administrators, department heads, teachers, and others.
Mr. David, would you read the next slide, please?
Budget overview. 2017-2018 budget, seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine million, four hundred and fifteen thousand. 2018-2019 proposed, seventy-one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Debt change, zero. Send it to zero. Budget drivers, major budget increases, more than twenty-five thousand. Student transportation, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Tuition, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Official administration, S.A.U., one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Cleaning service, fifty-five thousand. Snow removal, twenty-eight thousand. Major budget increases, professional services, minus thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine. Rental land and building, minus thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. Fund transfer pack, minus forty thousand. Books, info, resources, and software, minus forty-one thousand, eight fifty-one. Bond and principal and interest, minus eighty-four thousand. Repair and maintenance, minus one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, oh fifty-one. Fund transfers and capital reserve, minus two hundred and fifty thousand. Construction services, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Equipment, minus three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven ninety-four.
Mr. O'Neil, would you review the budget by object code?
One XX total salaries for 2018, nineteen proposed, thirty-four million, two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. A difference of negative two hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ten. Two-ten, group insurance, nine million, six thousand and four dollars. Difference of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Two-twenty, social security contributions, two millions, six hundred and thirty thousand, and fifty-one dollars. Difference of fifty-three thousand, and fourteen dollars. Two-thirty-one, non-teacher retirement, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five, for difference of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two. Two-thirty-two, teachers' retirement, four million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-six. Difference of nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine. Two-forty, tuition reimbursement, two thirteen, two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, a difference of three dollars. Two-fifty, unemployment compensation, eighty-eight thousand, and twenty dollars. Difference of fifty-eight thousand, and twenty. Two-sixty, workers' comp, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, a difference of eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Two-ninety, other employment benefits, thirty-eight thousand, a difference of four thousand. Subtotal salaries and benefits, fifty-two thousand, excuse me, fifty-two million, eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, a difference of minus twenty-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen. Five-nineteen, student transportation, three million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. Difference of five hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-four. Five, six, X, tuition, two million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and two. Difference of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight. Count three-ten, official admin services, one million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. Difference of one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four. Four-twenty, cleaning services, one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred. Difference of fifty-five thousand. Four, forty-two, X, snow removal, thirty-nine thousand. Difference of twenty-eight thousand. Four-ten, water, sewer, and septic, forty-five thousand. Difference of fifteen thousand. Three-ninety, game expenses, ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four. Difference of five hundred, five thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Count six-ten, supplies, one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six. Difference of three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. Fifty-three, X, telecom slash communications, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eleven. Difference of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Count eight-ten, dues and fees, ninety-three thousand, four oh nine. Difference of one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Four-ninety, other purchases, services, seven thousand and one dollars. Difference of a thousand. Insurance, number, count five-twenty, two hundred and four thousand, eight hundred. Difference of zero. Count five-forty, advertising, eight thousand. Difference is zero. Count eight-eighty slash eight-ninety miscellaneous expenses, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twelve. A difference of minus forty-nine dollars. Count five-thirty-four, postage, fifty-four hundred. Difference of two hundred and negative. Count fifty, five hundred and fifty, printing, thirteen thousand, one hundred. Difference of minus four hundred and sixty dollars. Count sixty-two, X, utility slash energy, one million, eighty-three thousand, five hundred and one. A difference of minus twelve hundred and nineteen dollars. Five-eighty, travel and workshop, fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. A difference of minus a hundred and, excuse me, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Count three-ten to three-forty, professional services, one million, two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five. A difference of minus thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Count four-forty-one, land and rental, buildings, opposed one dollar. Difference is, is thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four, negative. Count sixty-four, X, slash six-fifty, books, info, software, one million, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. A difference of minus forty-one thousand, eight fifty-one. Count eight-thirty, slash nine-ten, bond, principal, and interest, is one million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. A difference of minus eighty-four thousand. Object code forty-three, X, repair and maintenance, is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. A difference of minus one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifty-seven dollars. Nine-thirty, fund transfers, three million, twelve thousand, five oh one. Difference of two hundred and ninety thousand. Four-fifty, construction services, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred. Difference of negative three hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Count seven-thirty, X, equipment, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. A difference of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four, negative. Subtotals for these expenses is nineteen million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, and forty-one dollars. Difference of twenty-three thousand, six nineteen. Total is seventy-one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen, for a delta of zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we'll open it to the floor for any questions or comments on the proposed One more time, anyone wish to speak concerning the proposed operating budget? Mr. Boyle, would you read the regulation concerning the default budget?
Default budget, prepared by school board. Default budget of the school, RSA 40 colon 13, Roman Number Nine, parentheses B, default budget. As used in this subdivision, means the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and increased, as the case may be, by debt service, contracts, and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating. For the purposes of this paragraph, one-time expenditures shall be appropriations not likely to recur in succeeding budget, as determined by the governing body, unless the provisions of RSA 40 colon 14B are adopted by the local political segment.
Thank you. Mr. David, would you review the default budget, please?
Default budget. Overview, account code, purposely appropriation prior year amount of default budget. Account code twenty-three-ten through twenty-three-nineteen of the school board, prior year, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one. No change. Instruction, eleven-hundred to eleven-ninety-nine, regular programs, nineteen million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. Increases of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. One-time appropriations, decrease, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven dollars. Total, nineteen million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. Twelve, account twelve-hundred to twelve-hundred-and-ninety-nine, special programs, nine million, ninety thousand, one hundred and forty-five. Increase, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-three. One-time appropriation reduction, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Default balance, two, nine million, three hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. Counts thirteen-hundred through thirteen-hundred-and-ninety-nine, locational programs, prior year, seventy-two thousand, two dollars. No change. Fourteen-hundred to fourteen-ninety-nine, other programs, prior year adopted budget, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. One-time appropriations reduction, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven. Default budget, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars. Counts sixteen-hundred to sixteen-ninety-nine, adult continuing education programs, prior year, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. One-time appropriation reduction, fourteen thousand. Default budget, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven. Eighteen-hundred to eighteen-ninety-nine, community service programs, prior year adopted, a dollar. No change. Support services, counts two thousand to two thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine. Student support services, prior year adopted budget, three million, six hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen. Increase, sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty. One-time appropriations reduction, ninety-eight thousand, two dollars. Default budget, three million, five hundred and sixty-six, nine, uh, nine hundred, three million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Supports, uh, sorry, accounts twenty-two-hundred through twenty-two-ninety-nine, instructional staff services, prior year adopted budget, one million, three hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight. Increase, eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. One-time appropriation reduction, thirty-four thousand, two sixty-two. Default balance, one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and Executive administration, account twenty-three-twenty, object three-ten, S.A.U. management services, prior year adopted budget, one million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Increase, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine eighty-four. Default, one million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, six ninety-two. Counts twenty-three-twenty to twenty-three-ninety-nine, all their administration, prior year adopted, six hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and six dollars. Reduction, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety. One-time appropriation reduction, eighteen thousand. Default, five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and sixteen. Account twenty-four-hundred through twenty-four-ninety-nine, school administrative service, three million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Reduction, sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. One-time appropriation reduction, eighty-five hundred. Default, three million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and two dollars. Accounts twenty-five-hundred through twenty-five-ninety-nine, business, prior year adopted, sixty-two thousand. Reduction, seven thousand. Default balance, fifty-five thousand. Accounts twenty-six-hundred through twenty-six-ninety-nine, land operations and maintenance, prior year adopted, four million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. Reductions, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. One-time appropriation reduction, seven, seventy-eight thousand, eighty-four dollars. Default balance, four million, forty-three dollars, four hundred and sixty, four million, forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Student transportation, accounts twenty-seven-hundred to twenty-seven-ninety-nine. Prior year adopted, three million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. No change. Accounts twenty-eight-hundred to twenty-nine-ninety-nine, support service, essential and other, seventeen million, eight hundred and thirty-six, eight hundred and three dollars, prior year adopted. Increase, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-six. One-time appropriation reduction, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five. Default balance, eighteen million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and four dollars. Forty-two-hundred, site improvement, prior year adopted, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred. One-time appropriations reduction, two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine. Default balance, one dollar. Forty-six-hundred, building improvement services, prior year adopted, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine. reductions or increases, increase of five hundred thousand. One-time appropriation reduction, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight. Default budget, five hundred thousand, and one dollar. Other outlays, account fifty-one-ten, debt service principal, prior year adopted, one million, six hundred thousand. No change. Account fifty-one-twenty, debt service interest, prior year adopted, two hundred and ten thousand. Reduction, eighty-four thousand. Default balance, one hundred and twenty-six thousand. Fund transfers, accounts fifty-two-twenty to fifty-two-twenty-one, food service, one million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Reduction, three hundred and fifty thousand. Default budget, one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Accounts fifty-two, twenty-two to fifty-two-twenty-nine, other special revenue, prior year adopted, one million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. reductions, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred. Default budget, one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand. Count fifty-two-fifty-one to capital reserve, two hundred and fifty thousand, one dollar, prior year adopted. One-time appropriation reduction, two hundred and fifty thousand. Default, one dollar. Total appropriations, prior year adopted, seventy-one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. reductions or increases, increase of one million, four hundred thousand, fifty, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. One-time appropriations reduction, one million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Default, seventy-one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and six dollars.
Thank you very much. Would you continue with the contractual obligations?
Again, account categories eleven-hundred, or account codes eleven-hundred through eleven-ninety-nine. Reason for reductions, increases or one-time appropriations. Contractual obligations, account codes twelve-hundred through twelve-ninety-nine, contractual obligations. Account codes fourteen-hundred through fourteen-ninety-nine, new equipment. Accounts sixteen-hundred to sixteen-ninety-nine, information access fees. Accounts two thousand to two thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine, professional services. Account code twenty-two-hundred to twenty-two-ninety-nine, in-service training. Account codes twenty-three-twenty to twenty-three-ninety-nine, S.A.U. budget increase. Account codes twenty-five-hundred to twenty-five-ninety-nine, Medicaid contracted services reduction. Account codes twenty-six-hundred to twenty-six-ninety-nine, rental decreases slash new equipment. Account codes twenty-eight-hundred to twenty-nine-ninety-nine, contractual obligations. Account code forty-two-hundred, capital site improvement projects, one-time expenditures. Account code forty-six-hundred, capital building improvement projects, one-time expenditures. Account code fifty-one-twenty, bond interest reduction. Account code fifty-two-fifty-one, one-time appropriation by warrant article.
Okay, just left some time for some public comment, questions. Mr. Boyle will, Matt will take over the reading from here. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the default budget?
As you're, as you're coming up to the microphone, um, the school board is going to be meeting next Thursday to make any necessary adjustments. I, basically, as far as, I'm still very comfortable with what we've done. We're well within our RSA's. And we've done this, prepared this budget to our best availability. There is, uh, the RSA's allow for, we'll call it, I guess technically, new information. Information comes up, whether it's, uh, because there apparently is information that is being assembled. So the school book review regarding both special ed, and most recently, the district went out to bid on transportation for next year's transportation contract, so, um, the, for next Thursday, nice school board meeting, there will be, well, the school board members will, will be receiving an update on where our transportation costs lie. As right now, the numbers that are in the operating, that are in the default budget, represent last year's budgeted numbers, as, as we're required to by statute. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi. Yes, hi. Laurie Hirschenrother from Plasto. I choose to invest in this district. I am invested as a parent. I am invested as a taxpayer. I am invested as a Timberlane employee, and I am invested as the president of the Timberlane Support Staff Union. As this budget season has progressed, I cannot help but have growing fears. I fear that my son, who will be entering the high school next year, will not have the same amazing opportunities that my daughters did, both excelled as 2017 and 2014 Timberlane graduates, who by the way, both now attend WPI and Worcester. I want more for the children of this district than just keeping the doors open. We need to continue to strive for excellence. I fear what will happen to my property taxes, because the government of the state of New Hampshire does not adequately fund a public education. We need to demand better. There are far too many unknowns for our future. SB 193 is just a small example of that. I fear for my incredible colleagues. I, I fear that they will choose to leave our district as we continue to hear the opinion of some, that we are so overstaffed. The dedication to educating all students that I witness every day is inspiring. Does our community truly appreciate the talent that we have? How do we retain such talent? I can assure you, between school board and budget committee I can assure you, between school board and budget committee meetings and social media mudslinging, our school climate has taken a hit. I fear that I don't have answers for T S S U members as they ask me if their position is safe, or if our programs will be the same next year. Words cannot express what an honor it is to work alongside such devoted staff. My question to you tonight is, if lines in our default budget are underfunded next year, where will funds be taken from to make up their shortcomings? That's my question.
Mister Gerson, I'd like to add a question. And I, I'd also like to make a comment. Thank you. Um, that will be up to the school board next year. If the default budget, if, uh, the default budget is inactive, that, those decisions will be up to the school board next year.
So for anyone who is continuing on the school board, would they like to comment on their opinion on that?
So, so, could you read, could you, give me the question again, please?
That's okay.
Just a short version, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So, if lines in our default budget are underfunded next year, where will funds be taken from to make up for shortcomings?
I guess, basically, you, you have a, currently, as the default budget stands, you're at seventy-one million, three seventy. The district for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, spent sixty-seven point two million. We are on the spend track right now between sixty-nine and seventy million, approximately. We're halfway through the year. I would expect, uh, the superintendent, the business ability, there's no magic number, no matter what budget passes. There's no services, as we set up here this evening. There were no classes being talked about removed. Um, it's, 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 it's a number. So to me, I don't run the day-to-day operations, unless anyone in the school board runs the day-to-day operations of the district. Surprises happen. Most recently had happened, uh, with heating systems. You have to find the money. If decisions have to be made, I'm confident the right decision will be made. I'm also confident that the Timberlane education will go on. These doors will open.
And excel.
Whether we give you a million dollars more or a million dollars less, there's nothing you can show me will affect that, that statement, nothing. I'm very confident the staff here will do what they always do.
Oh, believe me, I know how hard we work.
I'm very familiar, I'm very familiar how hard we work.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Green?
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to make clear that although the law says the previous year, what it actually means is this current budget year. That's what the law means. It, the default budget is based on the current year's budget. So just to clarify that for the public. Um, and to follow up with, uh, Mister Boyle's statement that at the next school board meeting, we'll be considering the transportation contract, um, I'd just like to point out that the administration is withholding the bids for the, uh, transportation R F P that came in, so that this is not public information and it hasn't been shared with the school board, which I believe is a violation of the law.
I'd like to correct that, I'd like to correct that misstatement. Uh, we're not withholding, we're not withholding the transportation bids. There are, um, those are being reviewed by the legal team. It's one of the reasons that you would not release the bids while they're under review. There are, um, some hidden expenses perhaps in the bids, and we want to make sure that the number that we bring to the school board in terms of the bid is accurate. I will, uh, I will commend, um, Attorney Dowd, because as I look at, at the number that he put in the operating budget, and what we think the increase will be, is within a couple of thousand dollars. We're, we're short right now, uh, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars in our transportation bid, and his number was within, within a couple of thousand dollars. He did, he did a great job rejecting what we thought we needed, but we want to make sure, um, that there aren't hidden costs in there. So what would be a hidden cost? It's, it's like, um, for instance, is there a fuel up charge? Is there, um, if we have the bus an extra half an hour, does that cost a whole additional day? Or there, there are some, there's a lot of language in there that we want to make sure is clean, so that, this is a five-year contract, so we want to make sure what we agree to is in the best interest of, of obviously, the taxpayers and, and the students and families that we serve.
Thank you.
Mrs. Green?
Thank you. I'd just like to mention that bids are public information. They become public when they are opened.
I'd also like to remind everybody that the bids were opened in public, and, um, obviously, the people were there, and so, um, as they're analyzed, and when there are , uh, concerns with what they may contain, once they're in the hands that you, you send them to legal, they're not available to the public until legal gives them back and clears them. That's, that's the law.
That's a violation of the law.
We have an attorney right here.
Okay. Excuse me. Gerson, you, you want me to hear this thing on this, or what?
I'm sorry, yes. I, I, first of all, I'd like to hear from, I know Dr. Farah had a comment.
Yes.
Um, I, I guess my comment was, uh, to both the previous comments. The school board has not yet seen either the transportation bid packets, or any of the summaries on the transportation bids. It is supposed to be on our agenda for next Thursday. My concern right now is that, um, we're talking about a major contract the school board is going to have well under a week, possibly only a day or two, before this next meeting to review those bids. I, at this point, I'm not, I'm not sure that will stay on the agenda. I'm not sure when the legal review is going to be done, and I certainly will not be willing to, to revoke the default unless I've had adequate time to take a look at the bid packets and the summaries of those bids.
Thank you. I, I guess my fears in the stand. Thank you.
Any other comments on the default?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sarah Machmar. I'm from Plasto. Um, I have a specific question concerning the default budget. Um, in the summary that was provided, the board removed eighty-five hundred dollars from lines twenty-four hundred to twenty-four ninety-nine, Office of the Principal, Other Services, School Administration, but on the last page did not provide a justification. So I'm just curious what that was.
Can you hold on a sec?
Mister, Mister Dowd, can you take that, or?
Well, well, we're looking this up here.
Okay. Stand by. Yes.
Uh, while they're looking that up, I can mention, I could state that, uh, that was never discussed with the board.
Never viewed. Twenty-four minute to twenty-four ninety-nine is the line, is the section. There are, there is an additional reduction of, um, sixty-one to fifty-eight, and then, um, it's listed as a, under the one-time appropriations, but on the last page, there's no, um, reason. So I'm just curious.
My, my understanding, and also from reviewing previous default budgets prepared by the business manager, there are not always, the previous business manager, there, there are not always explanations for each line, but you're talking about lines twenty-four hundred?
Mm-hmm.
To twenty-four ninety-nine?
I'm just curious what was removed, what the eighty-five hundred dollars was.
Hold on, I just need to get this. Oh, I see.
It's that three point three million.
Okay. Under optical one-one-one, there was a, a removal. Uh, there was a decrease of appropriation under line seven. Sub, sub-line, this is, uh, function in twenty-four-ten, uh, object code seven thirty-seven. Uh, there was a decrease of a one-time appropriation there. There were also decreases under twenty-four-ten, eight-ten.
What was the one-time appropriations?
There, there are increases, there, you're, you're looking at a summary, you're not looking at, they're not, beyond, beyond what you're looking at, there's also further sub-lines here, so.
So I understand.
So that's what I, it's, it's a, it's a decrease offset by an increase. So there were decreases and increases here. So it, it's not, it's not a, there aren't just two things. There are several things are contributing to the decrease, and several to the overall increase, so it's, it's not a.
Should that explanation be included on your last slide?
It's not required. It could certainly be added, and, and that will certainly be something that I'd be happy to have added.
Yeah.
If I, if I could add, add my concern, you know, when I ask my business administrator to explain that, he can't.
He can't.
That's a problem. You know, this is a budget that we have to actually execute, and the business administrator doesn't have an explanation.
Right.
That's, it's, that's, that's problematic for us.
Absolutely. I understand. Thank you.
Well, well, there might be, yeah, it's basically problematic, but again, as, as Dr. Farah just said, uh, it seems to be a tradition of Timberlane, where that's going. So we have a new business administrator, that's what we're going to start doing, that's fine.
It's not what we're starting to do. The previous business administrator could answer the questions when I asked him in the office. This, he has no idea how this was calculated.
Excuse me, I, I would like to interject here. I offered on the word on one occasion, as, as the chair, to discuss with the business manager, line by line, how these reductions and additions were made. I'm not sure what else to say. This is the default budget of the school board. I have offered my services to the business administrator. I have not had any contact. I did provide him for the explanations for the lines, because that's what I was told he needed, so. I, Mister Dowd, I'm certainly happy if there's some concern that you're not aware of how these adjustments were made, to get those to you, or have a discussion.
No, those simply weren't listed in the, uh, in the explanations that, that I had, that I could include in that budget. I can't hear.
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't have those, those lines from the descriptions that were provided by Dr. Farah, which I appreciate. Uh, I did receive a copy of a more detailed, uh, function, object, default budget, um, just within the past day or so, and have not had an opportunity to, to digest it. Uh, the, the explanations were provided to me, that, that explanation was what they just let it out and ask for that.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Rob Collins, Danville. First, I just want to ask, uh, Mister Boyle, you just mentioned that all of the appropriations that were voted in last year were moved over to the default budget?
I thought you said.
I thought you did.
I said all the obligations, all the, all the, uh, obligations, contract obligations.
Okay. I didn't, I thought you said all of the appropriations.
No, no.
As required by law.
No. I, I did everything required by law, yes. Everything that was, everything that has to be done by law is what's done by law.
Okay, so can you tell me, uh, the one-time appropriations that were determined by the board?
There's a list of one-time expenses, and I'll be honest with you, we, we, we are, we, at the request of the school board, we agreed to have this meeting, okay? Um, because by statute, it wasn't required, it was discussed or mentioned last week. So, we requested, we were requested to have a fifteen to twenty, thirty-minute presentation, and that's what we're trying to do. Um, I don't believe we're going to sit here and spend two, three, or four hours going through a list of one-time expenses. Is that what your question is?
Yeah, can you give me five?
Sure, I'll, I'll give you five.
I'm asking Mister Boyle, actually.
I'm, I'm going to detect that to the, uh, to the vice chair, okay?
There's a decrease of a one-time appropriation, line eleven hundred, object code seven thirty-seven, eleven hundred, seven thirty-four.
Hold on. Let's go back to.
Eleven hundred, seven thirty-seven.
Can we go back to eleven hundred, seven thirty-seven?
Seven thirty-three, new equipment, decrease, one-time appropriation.
So eleven hundred, seven thirty-seven?
Correct.
What's the title on that?
New equipment.
Seven thirty-seven is replacement equipment.
Seth, I'm sorry, seven thirty-three. Seven thirty-three is new equipment.
And what were the others?
Seven thirty-four, new computer equipment.
And what's the justification for that?
It's new equipment. It would be considered a one-time expense.
Mister Dowd, do we have, uh, new equipment, new computer equipment we buy every year?
We do, as part of a technology plan that was approved by the school board.
I don't think your microphone is on.
We do. We do purchase new equipment every year pursuant to the technology plan that was adopted by the Timberlane Regional School Board.
So it's not a one-time expense? It's a recurring expense?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before you go on there, Mark, so, I'm glad the attorney's here. The only people who can make the decision on what a one-time expense is are members of the Timberlane School Board, not the business administrator.
No, I understand, and thank you.
Oh, I thought you asked the business administrator. Because the only people that are mad at, on, on what is a one-time expense, is the majority vote of the Timberlane School Board.
So, um, looking further into the athletic lines, um, the ski, swim, hockey line was cut, twenty thousand dollars. That's a recurring expense. That's not one-time.
There's a pattern, that, that is, that would be, the current budget's up twenty thousand from the prior year. There's a pattern of historical expenditures of thirty thousand dollars.
What was the, what's this year's?
Budget discussions, excuse me, Mister Collins. Budgets discussions indicated that this is discretionary and not committed at the current budget level. That's why that was reduced by twenty thousand dollars.
So the RSA says you have to take this year's appropriation and reduce it by contracts or one-time.
Is there a contract?
One-time expenditures?
We have contracts.
Then, then this would be, and we, we did look at the historical expenditures that were at thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but that's not the job of the school board, to inform the default budget.
The job of the school board is to make the default budget.
Maybe you can put up this slide with the law about the default budget? Because it, it doesn't say that you're supposed to adjust them based on prior years. It says you're supposed to take the prior year appropriation and reduce it by contracts or one-time expenses.
Okay, I, I will take that under consideration. We'll, we'll take that under consideration for that line.
So what, what is the, the contract or one-time expense in that line that you reduced?
It is based on what the expenditures are. You'll also see, um.
But that's not what, you, you don't have the authority to do that under the law.
Okay, we will take that under consideration. Thank you for pointing that out.
One more thing, if I could. The special education transportation line was increased in the proposed. Uh, it's flat in the default. I believe those are contractual obligations, the, the special education, is that transportation contract out for bid, or is, is that a current contract we're in?
The transportation line is, as I stated earlier, that line is, um, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars short what it needs to be. Uh, right now, this contract is in, uh, legal, and we'll be bringing that. It was originally, um, we budgeted for the proposed budget, it was originally scheduled to bring in the middle of February for the school board to vote on it. We moved it up and fast-paced it so they could have it for next Thursday. And this is the first, I'm hearing, that they're not going to have enough time, but we need legal to look at the, um, at the contract. We, we actually had Mister Boyle, uh, in, and we verified, um, the contract, what we, we thought it would cost. Again, I'll commend, uh, Attorney Dowd, his number is, is, is spot-on. In terms of special ed, I was predicting that we'd be about eight hundred thousand dollars short in tuitions in this line. Uh, the real number is one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. And those are tuitions that we're currently paying. So you'd ask yourself, how could you be short? How would you, well, we've had move-ins. We've had students move in since this budget was being prepared, uh, I met with the special ed director, so those are legal obligations, those are actual students that, um, require tuitions for outside of Timberlane. I'm going to be asking the board to adjust that line next Thursday so that we can meet those obligations next year. And, um, I confirmed those numbers and, and verified them with our special ed director, and certainly will certify them, uh, for next Thursday. Transporting those students, legal obligation. Thank you.
Yes, yes, Dr. Farah.
Uh, to Mister Collins' point, I think, I think the special education transportation contract is not sent out for bid at the same time as the regular transportation contract? Was that your question? Is the special education contract up for bid also?
So I see that in the, it's line two-seven-two-one-five-one-nine, uh, student transportation, special education, it's up two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but the board flatlined it.
That's correct. We have a, we do have a contract that is in place that, that is not up for, uh, a bid this year. That contract is in place. That two hundred and fifty-four thousand was formulated based on our legal obligation to transport our special education students to their placements. We do have a contract in place.
We do have a contract in place with our current special education transportation company. That contract is in full force and effect.
So, can anyone explain why we're not gonna honor that contract?
We're gonna, we're gonna honor all contracts.
Could you speak to the mic, please?
I'd be happy to speak to the mic.
Thank you.
We're gonna honor all contracts. Fortunately, all contracts don't amount to anywhere near 70 million dollars in contracts. Now, when it comes to special ed and transportation specifically, as recent as 4:30 this afternoon, we're getting different numbers. Now, I understand, as Superintendent just mentioned, there was, I guess it was four or five tuitions of students that were missing. I personally sat down 48 hours ago with the superintendent and the business manager. I saw a list of tuitioned students, which is just one portion of the special ed budget. That number is different tonight than it was 48 hours ago. That number is different tonight than it was four or five weeks ago when the budget committee, the budget committee did their job and voted on a budget. Within the budget committee's budget, they came up with a number, actually the budget committee came up with a number, the administration gave the budget committee a number for special ed because the budget, the budget committee voted a flat-lined budget and said, here's our budget. We, by law, enough has been a back and forth with counsel, which we never really, we're arguing with counsel, that you obviously have to meet all contractual obligations. So, the, there is a number, I think, of 9.7 million that was in the budget, that the budget committee approved. That number went up to 9.9, now it's a 10.1. This has all happened over the last couple of weeks. When the Timberland School Board voted on a 9.3 million dollar special ed number, that was up 300,000 dollars from last year's special ed budget. So, that special ed is something that we're gonna have hard numbers for next Thursday night. Transportation numbers, I believe, are still being assembled, what the actual number's going to be. So, the school board, we can only vote on what's in front of us and that's what we're gonna continue to do.
So you will add in the contractual obligations?
We will review the entire thing, so for all I know, we might find stuff that, we might be reducing costs, but yes, of course, all contractual obligations from Timberland will be met. I don't even have the authority not to meet contractual obligations, of course I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to speak back to Dr. Metzler's point about, this was the first time that it was said that if we did not have, the board did not have enough time to review the transportation bids, that we would not take those up at a meeting. If somebody cares to, you don't have to. I know I specifically said that I would, that we would like to see those bids at least one week prior to the meeting, so we are one week prior to our next school board meeting.
If I could mention, that was the question, the bids, the bids, not the sum.
Well, I'm confident, before you, I'm confident that we will get what we need so that, you know, the board can make an intelligent decision and discussion. But we obviously would like to see whatever be, make available to the board, you know, before that.
I'd like to comment. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mark Sherwood, Sandown, New Hampshire. I'm glad you have that confidence. Looking at this process from afar, as a member of the public, I'm less than confident. And the reason I say that is I know that in the beginning of December, the business admin had put forward his proposed budget. It was being discussed, at which stage, a revised budget from the school board, from Dr. Farah, was put forth. And my understanding is that it was discussed for less than 90 minutes and then it was voted on by the board. How can we, as the public, be confident that the school board is in fact doing their due diligence without unnecessarily jeopardizing our tax dollars and the academic rigors of Timberland for the next year's school board, when they spent less than 90 minutes? It took them less than 90 minutes to approve a budget that Dr. Farah came up with, of which there have been several new iterations. It's less than inspiring, especially when the BA had spent, obviously, a lot of time preparing and, to my understanding from the documents I'd seen, it had been a much more detailed and rigorous understanding as to what the district needed to run, not just a brash outline of which the board voted, not unanimously, not to go through line by line. I think it's a bit of a red herring.
Okay. In terms of the, to just refresh people's memory, on the discussion of the default budget, the business administrator drafted a default budget. Default budget is not a proposed budget, it's a drafted budget because it is drafted based on statutory requirements. There was, the business administrator came to the school board, had his draft budget. There was a question about presenting the budget. He said, this is your budget, it's open for discussion. Discussion ensued. I can't speak for other members of the board, I was prepared to go through that budget line by line. If you watched the 90 minutes of discussion, we were going through it line by line. I had data with me, I was going back and forth with the business administrator. At one point, there was a motion by someone on the school board or a comment that they only wanted to move to the summary lines. That was not me. We did, there was a move to summary lines. We discussed that for a period of time. At that point, there was a motion for a bottom line budget for the default number. There was a second on that motion. There was no restriction on discussion. We could have sat there for another few hours and discussed that budget. Historically, the level of detail that this school board looked at this budget with, the amount of time that the school board spent on the budget, is categorically, by far, the most in the, I don't know, however many years I have been watching the school board look at default budgets. So, to say that we were rash and did not spend enough time on it, I think would be unfair. We're looking at it again. We've had discussions about this. If there were questions that the business administrator had, both the chair and I offered to go in and have discussions with the business administrator. I'm confident that if I had to go to a court of law to defend this default budget, that I could. It is my signature that would be on this default budget under perjury of law, that I think it is true and accurate. That's all I have to say.
I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning that at all. What I'm questioning is that the board, members of the board, voted after having less than 90 minutes to review a summary and yet, you are uncomfortable potentially if you have less than one week to look at the transportation. It seems for me, from afar, to be a little bit smoke and mirrors.
Well, let me help you...
Excuse me. The budget comprises several hundred lines, we're in the base data, if you'd like to know, that I'm looking at. I have about 350 lines that I'm looking at right now. A transportation bid, to be honest, maybe a week is enough. I've never seen one. So, I'd rather err on the side of caution. I spent at least two to three weeks on the default budget and I've spent much more time now. So, you might, you might think it's smoke and mirrors, but as people know...
You probably still don't have the benefit of weeks, they had 90 minutes when it was voted on that, is my point.
Excuse me, they had the benefit of two weeks to look at the drafted default budget. Everybody had the same opportunity to look. Everybody had an opportunity for discussion. There was no closure on discussion.
I was referring to your presentation. Thank you very much.
Rob Collins, Danville. You mentioned the statutory formula and part of that is the definition of a one-time expenditure. It says, for the purposes of this paragraph, "One-time expenditures shall be appropriations not likely to recur in the succeeding budget as determined by the governing body." On the summary of the school board default, you have listed a number of dollar amounts that are in the one-time expenditure column. Was there ever a vote by the board on any one-time expenditure? I'm seeing no, from a couple of board members. So if the board hasn't determined the one-time expenditures, how have you met your statutory responsibility and followed the statutory formula?
The board has the default budget. They also have a more detailed budget. They also are looking at the business administrator's draft default budget. If they are not comfortable with what they're looking at, then they shouldn't sign the MS-27.
That's not what I asked, though. I asked, when was there a vote of the board to determine one-time expenditures?
I don't think there was. I don't think there, and I'm, again, looking at the last few years.
You're not asking about the last few years?
Yeah, I know you're not and I know why you're not. I know why you're not asking about it, because we have spent, well, 90 minutes in a meeting. And again, what's the list of one-time expenditures is up to this board? No one on the...
When did the board make up their decision?
No one on the Timberland School Board has been denied any input on this budget.
I didn't ask about that. I asked, when did the board determine?
There's been no vote at the board on one-time expenditures.
So then how are there one-time expenditures in this default budget?
I think the business administrator put one-time expenditures, how did you determine one-time expenditures in the default budget, Mr. Dowd?
Well, that was, that was an area that I was hoping to discuss with the board. However, your question, Mr. Collins, earlier, can you identify potentially five potential one-time items? 2650, 733, vehicle replacement, 22,999. 2650, 737, 34,999, vehicle replacement. We ask about, I have a list of maintenance items for the parking lot, 12,000. Resurfacing tennis courts, 95,000. JV middle school dugouts, 25,000. Daving, 125,000, that was at the end of that cycle. So I do have a number of articulated one-time items that would be up to the board for discussion. Another would be, count 1,400, object 880, miscellaneous expense 10,000, athletic hall of pain.
So, were you able to express those one-time expenses with the board?
No, and I was hoping that there were other areas in there for discussion as well as to where the board, I'd been asking direction, as to what would be determined to be a one-time expenditure in order to assist me in preparing this budget. And these are, these are things that I've identified that I would say, well, more likely than not. However, there may have been things in there that I would appreciate discussing.
So what I'm hearing is there was never a vote by the board on any one-time expenditures? There was just a vote by the board on the overall bottom line of the default? And the business administrator came with a list of one-time expenditures to discuss and vote on, but the board ignored that list?
Excuse me, excuse me, this is the first I've heard of a one-time list or this discussion that you were going to have with us and I think we've had, didn't we have another meeting? We've had at least one school board meeting since then and this is the first I've heard of this. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to call you out, Mr. Dowd, it's just, I have not heard this before.
But I think all of the 7th of December, if you had him the chance to present it, he would have seen it.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I was at the meeting. Mr. Dowd did not specifically said that he was not here to present the budget. That is exactly, not exactly what he said, I'm not quoting. Well, it was a starting point, people had opportunities to ask questions. I certainly don't think that Mr. Dowd was shut down at that meeting.
No, he was, I watched it.
Oh, he was, okay.
You started in on your budget immediately, you never picked his budget up. You didn't.
Didn't see that budget.
No one, the whole board just ignored the business administrator's default budget. If other members want to chime in about that...
Peter Beal was turning around and debating Dr. Farah on the merits of that. The motion failed and then they moved on.
Well...
Those decisions were made that evening by the school board to turn around and determine what a one-time expense was by developing a 71,3 million dollar default budget.
Why is he answering to the school board?
They just said, I know, it's interesting, a budget committee member is commenting on the school board business, but they just said they never voted on one-time expenses.
Here's what they voted on, ladies and gentlemen, which is the best news of all.
Who's that?
It's Timberland School Board.
Oh.
They voted on the bottom line budget as by statute and as a matter of fact, it's even gone to court right from this district. And the judge said, the default budget is a bottom line budget. He didn't sit back and say, what were the one-time expenditures? Didn't happen. It happened right here in this district. It's a one, it's a bottom line budget and that's what we did.
And you keep saying that you followed the law.
We did follow the law.
But the law says that you need to determine, the governing body has to determine the one-time expenditures.
Wait, listen, you can read the law any way you want, any way you want, Rob, that's great. We followed the law, there's been a lot of talk about this.
So when did you determine the one-time expenditures?
Of course we can honor the contracts. You don't have to vote, do you have a copy of the law that says the school board, the governing body, has to vote on the one-time expenditures? Do you have that?
No, it says you have to determine them.
Oh, you said, you said the law. Do you have the copy of the law that says you have to vote on the one-time expenditures?
When did you determine them?
We did what we were supposed to do and I'm happy to, it's in Mr. Sherwood's concern, your school board this year spent a lot of time on this particular item unlike previous years. We take this very serious. So that's why, to the point, we're even having another meeting on it next week with new information. So we are spending, wow, this will be the third or fourth meeting on the default budget.
Okay, any other comments on the default budget? Second call, any more comments on the default budget? Just a couple of minutes, please.
Yes, Phil Sherwood, Atkins, New Hampshire. Thank you for your time. I know that you have spent a fair amount of time unless I could pick out line items and express concerns about what am I to for the district or whether I think it's legally meeting the contractual obligations before the district or the state. But I'm not gonna take that deep dive tonight because frankly, that's not my job, that was your job. And if I picked out any individual line item, it was basically just gonna color a picture and that picture is this, at least in my eyes. There's been a growing drumbeat over the last couple of years, a drumbeat to cut taxes and cut spending, cut the school budget. And it's been getting louder and louder and there's some new faces in the school board and they ran on this and they won. And the drumbeat has been getting louder and louder. And from the outside, quite frankly, what it looks like is that there was a commitment to cut the budget, but not a commitment to figure out how to actually do it legally or how to do it responsibly. Credible arguments can be made that we're spending too much money in X, Y, and Z, but I'm sorry, if folks feel like they were spending more time this year than the last year in the budget, I get the sense it's because you Heismaned the administration. They're the ones that have to implement the budget. So I don't begrudge the fact that the chairman had to get outside counsel to confirm what the in-house counsel was trying to tell him all along. I hope, I hope you all get it right.
Excuse me. You've got that backwards.
Okay, well, in any case, multiple attorneys had to come in...
Yes.
...to confirm what some of your colleagues were saying all along.
No, what I was saying all along, they were questioning me.
And as am I, chairman, because I think you have every right to set the budget and you've said over and over again that you're gonna meet the contractual obligations. But what you failed to do, I believe, is actually budget for those contractual obligations. And to me, I feel like you're doing what's politically expedient. You're handing out drumsticks, cut taxes, cut taxes, cut spending, but you're not actually doing the work of a legislator and figuring out how to do it responsibly. That's my take.
So you have, so you are concerned then about the proposed budget? Because we're within 300,000 or 400,000 dollars each other, so you must have those exact same concerns with the proposed budget. have those exact same concerns with the proposed budget.
I'm confused with the process.
Well, I'm just saying, it's amazing how close the proposed budget and default budget are. You have eighteen members of your community came up with a number. We're at seventy-one three seventy, they're at seventy-one seven fifty. Eighteen individuals from four different towns coming up within three or four hundred thousand dollars. Amazing.
Mr. Beal?
Actually, I'd like to correct that. I believe ten members did, actually. The budget...nine members in the budget committee and one member of the school board. The school board operation was just a black box.
The school...wait.
Okay, any other...
I don't even understand what I'm...
Any other comments on the budget? Very quickly, please.
Very quickly. So this is something, Rob Collins, Danville. The fund transfer changes that were made, I'm concerned about. And this really gets into the weeds of things, but this is the time to ask about it, right? According to our attorney, you decreased fund transfer lines by over five hundred thousand dollars at a recent board meeting. And I'm wondering if you understand the consequence of that? Because why not just decrease it to zero? Right? It would make the budget look a lot better. But why are you able to decrease it five hundred thousand dollars to move that money into the capital budget without a contract for no particular reason? I'm concerned about the consequences of doing that. You have a budget that you cannot exceed that's voted on by the voters. If those fund transfer lines are higher because you guys cut deep into them, money has to be found from other places, from what I understand. That's the consequence. It's another place where you're not funding it properly, that you're going to have to erode other areas of the budget to fund it properly. And maybe the business administrator could speak to that. I would appreciate that, if you could.
I can speak to that, Mr. Collins. In a situation where we have unanticipated revenue, where I may not budget it, in that case, it would be added to the budget and expended. But the two lines in question, the food service fund and the federal projects and grants, those are two fairly consistent lines that we have throughout the district. We may be beneficiary of a grant for homeland security, or the state of New Hampshire for some infrastructure improvements. Those would be perhaps in a different...a little bit different category. These are very, very recurring, and we do budget on a gross budgeting basis, so I have to budget those expenses in order to have the budget to spend them, even if they're offset by revenue. So if they're not spent, I can't argue that there's unanticipated revenue, because it seems fairly consistent. So I don't know what I would do in that situation.
You would have to find the money from elsewhere in the budget, I would assume.
Potentially, yeah.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, potentially, because of the five hundred thousand dollar cut to those lines that the board just did.
There's a reason to be funded, those fund transfer lines, the way the budget, to be able to make the expenditures, even when they're offset by revenue.
So I'd ask the board, since you do have another meeting, to consider the default budget, to fund those fund transfer lines appropriately. Cutting them, moving that money to the capital budget, one, increases taxes, and, two, it's not an appropriate way to move money within the budget. It is not. You're setting up our school district to have to erode other areas of the budget because of that move. So please correct it.
Any other comments?
Yes, here?
Yes.
Since we have our attorney here, I'd actually like to bring this on up as a question to him. And this could probably even answer your question, Mr. Collins, is that we have a belief here that there's a segregation between capital and non-capital projects. And it's...we need to keep accounting for that for the proper purposes of tax dispersment, because there's according to our articles of agreement, they have different formulas. But RSA says that the governing body has...we, as a town, approve one budget. It's not segregated into different buckets. It is one-dollar amount. The governing body by RSA has the ability to allocate that as it does, as and as it sees fit, to run the presidential affairs of the district. They should have complete jurisdiction in moving money on both sides of that fictitious capital, non-capital divide that they apparently have put in place. And nobody seems to understand why it's there. I understand it's got to be accounted for, for when to reject up to DRA for tax setting purposes, but during the operation of the district, the school board should not have their hands tied. They should have full access to the entire dollar amount of the approved, you know, funding that was allocated at town meeting. I know it's a loaded question.
Well, he's looking up the RSA. Could I just make a quick comment? Danville pays about eleven percent of the capital budget. We pay about twenty percent of the operating budget.
Oh, I understand.
So if you move capital, money that's collected under the operating budget into the capital budget, Danville pays a much higher percentage of that. Do you understand that?
I do understand that, but the question is, is that you're doing it for a particular cause. If, for example, if the...what's happened here in the district before is we had a septic system that went down. If they didn't have the funds, they got to pull that from somewhere. It shouldn't have to be just...you can only pull from the capital expenditures, the capital side of this virtual budget that we've created. It should be the entire gamut of the total operating budget that's been done. It's until that dollar amount is spent, then it's going to be turned around, because you're using it for a capital project. It's going to be charged back accordingly.
Well, I think the problem is, it's not a law. It's an obligation based on the Articles of Agreement.
It's an obligation to report it for the purposes to the Department of Revenue so that they can charge it back to the communities appropriately. So that's the obligation, not the obligation of when it gets spent.
The obligation is, when it gets spent, that Danville doesn't get hosed in paying twenty percent of capital projects. That's the obligation of the board, the governing body, because that's what you do when you move operating budget into capital budget. That's the obligation. And when you slash the capital budget close to zero, their hands are tied. You're right. Because if there is a catastrophic event, they will move the money, and Danville gets hosed. Sandown does as well, too.
It's the nature of it, it's that it's going to be moved for a particular reason. It's not because you're doing a planned project, which you know what it is. It's to address emergencies. You're not moving money around just for the sake of moving it around. You're doing it to address the need.
But that doesn't change the fact that Danville gets hosed.
It's a part of the Articles of Agreement. I understand that. But the point is, is you're saying is that it's tying your hands. I'm saying we've created an artificial barrier that's tying our hands that's not required. The outcome of it, how it's getting dispersed to the respective tax communities, is agnostic.
It's an obligation of the governing body to follow the Articles of Agreement. It's an obligation that they...
They're going to turn around, so you're going to turn around and make an argument that says, we're not going to turn around and fund this emergency of a septic system because Danville's going to get charged more of it? I understand that.
You're not listening to me. What I said...
I am listening to you.
They will do it. They will. But if there's no money in the capital budget, they're going to pull operating money. They will do it.
And then we'll get charged back. But that's the point, is that they don't...right now, they can't charge that, because it's only in...right now, it's in separate silos.
Right, but if we have a capital budget, we can't cancel projects later in the year to fund a catastrophic event that happens in the middle of the year.
You're pulling it out of the operational side of it, and it's going to be charged differently. I do agree. The attorney, could you have any...
Does the lawyer wish to make a comment?
No.
Okay. This is Green.
Thank you. I'd just like to address the point of the fund transfers, unless Dr. Farah would like to do that. The way the fund transfers work is that you try to estimate the amount of revenue you're going to get from these certain activities, and you try to match that with a requested appropriation from the taxpayers. So if you're expecting ten dollars in revenue, you want to raise and appropriate ten dollars from the taxpayer. That's just the way it is. So it's supposed to be a wash. You raise it, but we get it in revenue, and then it's supposed to go in surplus. But what we found is that the federal grant is not going to be as high as it was budgeted. So we reduced it to match...we reduced the appropriation to match what we expect the federal grant to actually be. Now, if you don't do that, if you don't reduce or increase the appropriation to try to match what your projected revenue is going to be, then you have a surplus. And we don't need to build the surplus into the fund transfers. So that's the reason the fund transfers line was reduced.
Both lines, including the food service, looking at the revenues lines and looking at the enrollments. That's what that reduction was based on.
Enrollment...enrollment is...hello? Hello? 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 Enrollment is up this year, number one.
I'm well aware of that.
Okay. So, and second, I think, Mrs. Green, you just said you have revenue of ten dollars and expenditure of ten dollars, and you raise taxes ten dollars?
Yes.
No, you don't. You don't raise taxes ten dollars if you have a revenue budget of ten dollars. You don't do it. We have an expenditure budget of seventy-one million. We don't raise seventy-one million dollars in taxes. We don't. We raise about fifty-four, I think, or fifty. So I think that's incorrect information you just provided.
I typically, in revenue setting with the Department of Revenue, hold the lines to the extent that I can on food service, for example, to keep that estimate in our revenue budget when we set our tax rates. So we're never having to short that to go back to the taxpayers to have them make up the revenue, even if we're not going to be getting the revenue and we're not going to be having expenditure from it. It should be offset completely, so therefore, there would be no impact on taxation.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to move on, unless there's some new material to be brought forward by the attendees.
Coral Hampi, Danville. Can't believe we're doing this. Excuse me. There's been a lot of talk with budgets of worst-case scenarios, how many administration, teachers, support staff cut, programs, sports, et cetera. I ask, and it's just a statement, I ask that you please consider funding the areas that need, whether it be the transportation, the special ed, any area that really needs it, to retain the staff of this district, because we are what make this district great. We need the money to do that. We need the staff to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments on the default budget? Okay, I want to move on. Mr. Dow, would you review the revenue budget, please?
Revenue budget, local revenue. Count zero seven seven oh, unassigned fund balance, proposed, one million eight hundred and fifty thousand. Count thirteen ten, regular tuition, four hundred thousand, proposed. Account thirteen fourteen, summer school tuition, five thousand, proposed. Count thirteen sixteen, evening division, adult education tuition, seventeen thousand, proposed. Account sixteen hundred, food service, one million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, proposed. Count nineteen hundred and twenty, foreign funds, four hundred dollars, proposed. Count nineteen ninety, other local revenue, three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and thirty, proposed. Count nineteen ninety, SAE rental, forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty, proposed. Count fifty-two twenty-three, PAC programs, forty-five thousand, proposed. State revenue, count thirty-one eleven, education grant, nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand, thirty-two dollars, proposed. Count thirty-two ten, building eight, one million one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, proposed. Thirty-two twenty, kindergarten aid, zero, proposed. Count thirty-two forty-nine, vocational ed, transportation, thirty-one thousand, proposed. Count thirty-two sixty, child nutrition, seventeen thousand five hundred, proposed. Account thirty-two thirty, catastrophic aid, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, proposed. Count thirty-two ninety, other, seventy-nine thousand two hundred and twenty, proposed. Federal revenue, count forty-three hundred, federal projects, one million three hundred and ninety thousand, proposed. Account four hundred...sorry, forty-five sixty, lunch reimbursements, three hundred and fifty thousand, proposed. Account forty-five eighty, Medicaid, five hundred and sixty thousand, proposed. Account forty-two sixty, other, twenty thousand, proposed. Under other revenue, fifty-two thirty, transfers capital projects, nothing proposed. Under fifty-two fifty, capital reserve, nothing proposed. Total income, seventeen million eight hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-two, proposed. Assessment, fifty-three million nine hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, proposed. As per our total budget, seventy-one million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars.
Any comments on the revenue budget?
Yeah, I'd like to point on out that the direct assessment, which is actually the part that actually is through the Department of Revenue, is going to be charged back to the towns, which is fifty-three point nine million, which is approximately one million dollars more than what we had last fall for our tax rate. So with a level budget that's being proposed right now, we are looking at a million-dollar increase due to the reduction in revenue that we've experienced here in this proposed budget.
Any other comments?
I have one other comment. That number doesn't include the current proposal with the current aid. Thank you. Just as an FYI, someone brought up SB one ninety-three earlier, which has not been finalized yet, but in the event of that actually impacting our district significantly, that doesn't...these numbers don't include any projections, I believe, with regard to the impact that SB one ninety-three would have, which would be even more loss of income from the state.
Rob Collins, Danville. Just want to add to Mr. O'Neill's comment. We have a level-funded budget, a one-million-dollar shortfall in revenue, that is because of the way the state funds education, and that's the only reason. The state is shorting us a million dollars next year versus this year. Everyone should understand that.
To comment to that, the reduction is from ten point three million that the state granted last year to nine point eight in this current budget, which is roughly five hundred thousand. There's another half a million dollars that is not attributed to the state. I do agree with part of your sentiment, but it's not entirely the entire picture.
Dr. Farah?
To Sean's point, so at a level-funded budget with a million-dollar loss of revenue, we would not be looking at a level tax, and we'd still be looking at a tax increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Any other comments on the revenue budget? One more time, any more comments on the revenue budget? Okay. Mr. Boyle, would you read Article Three, please?
Article Three, Capital Reserve Fund. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District raise and appropriate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the school building construction, reconstruction, capital improvement, land and purchase capital reserve fund established in nineteen ninety-six? With such amount to be transferred from those funds in the June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first of this year, which were apportioned as capital expenses in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, in accordance with Article Six of the Timberlane Regional School District Articles of Agreement. No amount to be raised by taxation. Majority vote required.
Any comments on that, this Article Three? Okay. Moving on. Mr. Boyle, would you read Article Four?
Article Four, appoint agents of the capital reserve fund. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District appoint the Timberlane Regional School Board as agents to expend from the existing school building construction, reconstruction, capital improvements, and land and purchase capital reserve fund previously established in nineteen ninety-six? Majority vote required. Majority vote required.
Would someone from either the Budget Committee or the School Board wish to explain why this is put in there? This article was put in the warrant?
Well, this is a, I'll take a shot at it. Right now, I believe, the capital reserve fund of the district is about 1.3 million. So this was an article that was, I guess, benched back and forth between the boards. And I also think in lieu of our attempt here to get a tight budget to put in front of the voters, this, our district, over the years, has invested wisely in the future. We have the million three in our capital reserve right now. If the voters pass this article, that will allow the school board to make improvements on the purposes, I guess, you have to follow, which I don't think, Mrs. Sherman brought this up, there's, I have personally not seen this, and it's who made me more than I am, on what the actual, there's a document, it was established in 1996, for the school building construction, reconstruction, land purchase, major expenditures would happen. This would allow the school board to make that withdrawal during the year versus waiting for the annual vote, because traditionally, when the school or towns want to tap their capital reserve, it's warranted withdrawal from the voters. This would give that board that authority. I initially was against the process. I hope that if the voters pass this article, that immediately the school board comes up with some very strong policy of how you'd go about, what you would justify to tap those monies. And I understand it would be by the majority of your elected school board, but I would like to see it be more of an extreme, to get your hands on a million three versus someone had a good idea on any given Thursday night.
We also received the opinion from legal counsel, the district legal counsel, that this is the way many other school districts are handling their capital reserve funds, to make them where the school board is the agent of these funds. So it was a recommendation from the school district attorney.
Thank you. I am not in favor of this warrant article at all, because the current law, the way it's arranged in our district right now, is that it requires a vote of the public to release money from the capital reserve fund to fund specific capital projects within the district. And I would not like to see this amount of money being opened up to the discretion of the school board. I think it should remain under the sole authority of the voters. Thank you.
If I may, step aside from the moderator role and speak as the chair of the Budget Committee. We talked about this, and the feeling at the time was that this approach would not be used for routine, if I could use that word, I'll put it in quotes, capital expenses. It was there to be available, and if there was a serious failure in the, in one of the buildings, a furnace, or a septic system, or a pump, or a well, that it could be addressed quickly and expeditiously, and not have to wait to go through the process of having a public vote before the money is spent. This was our thinking at the time. And I think that's something that needs to be considered by the voters, because right now, it's very cumbersome if something catastrophic happened to get the money, particularly if it has not been funded. I'll put my moderator hat back on and turn it over to Mrs. Hepburn.
Thank you. I just want to kind of reiterate what Brian said and Mr. Gerns said, Chairman Burge Gerns. I'm just wondering, I think it's positive, the way this is, I think this is positive, given the school board the authority, but I also am concerned about constraining, and I like to see it for emergency purposes only, or if we have some type of work, like for instance, the boilers, okay? Some, let's face it, we have aging assets, and you never know what is going to be next. So I don't know if we could wordsmith this before deliberative session, or if you can address it with just a strong policy, but once this passes, the school board has no obligation to put in the policy. So I would almost suggest that we wordsmith it to be used for emergency purposes only, and then what becomes the definition of an emergency, right? So I love giving the school board the authority to have that capital available to them, but only under certain sets of circumstances. So kind of, Brian, I agree with you and Mr. Gerns.
Mr. Hughes?
So, just on, you hear me?
Mr. Hughes, come up here.
Okay. So we were discussing this because we were being asked to basically add money at the last minute, kind of, to the operating budget to cover a possible failure. So in the discussion with our attorney, Ashana See, I don't know if we can put that in that wording. I think that we're asking to appoint them, and this is, most reserve funds are created now with this wording in there. This is done at the town levels as well, we allow a selectman to do this. We did have discussions on whether we could add the school board as the appointees, as well as the Budget Committee, to add another set, and we're not allowed, we weren't an entity, as was discussed at last week's meeting, so we do understand that there is a possibility with anything where a board has oversight over that much money. There is a way to do it, they have to call a special meeting, they have to have a vote, it has to be out in the open, like a public hearing. So we are hoping that they are able to put policies around how they use that. The intent is for emergency purposes only, not to say, well, let's just go build this here and now, because we have access to the money.
I guess my point was, you know, once you get the fifth vote, you don't have to go to the public to get the turf, right? That would be, in my estimation, even maybe shooting myself in the foot, I wouldn't want that to happen. I would want the voters to vote on it. So that's, is my one concern with this, is that you don't have a rogue board, you know, 10, 15 years down the line, and someone's got that fifth vote on the board, and all of a sudden, we have a dome stadium out back.
And you do have, so if something ever does happen, you have the right to put the ballot, put this back on the ballot the next year to revoke it. So the intent is that this can be revoked in any warrant article the following year, if you feel like the board is, the boards change every year, so you don't know who's going to be there. It's always the intent that the board will take the budget they're given and use it wisely.
Mr. Beal, and then Dr. Farah?
I think it was Mrs. Sherman.
Sorry?
It was Mrs. Sherman.
Oh, Mrs. Sherman, sorry.
Yes, it was Mrs. Sherman. So I would like to look at the language, Dr. Farah and I were discussing this. The trustees of the trust funds, there chance to be the trustee of the trust funds in Danville, they hold the school trust funds. We need to look at the language of that particular trust fund, capital fund, to make sure. I don't think it should be spent on just anything either, candy and gum, Jack. We're not going to go spend a million three on candy and gum, but we could, if we had some authority, when we had an emergency, we'd have some money to spend. Right now, we'd have to wait all the way around the clock year to spend from that. And we haven't had a lot of success using those funds. It's been sitting there. It's not a very big account. We've had it since 96, and we haven't put a lot of money into it. So I know a million three sounds like a lot of money to us people, but in the big scheme of things, it's not very much money, and it wouldn't buy as much, it would buy a lot of candy and gum, but we're not going to spend it on candy and gum. So I think it talks about, does the voters trust the school board to spend it correctly and be wise with it? I would hope they would.
Yes, Dr. Farah?
And just to follow up on Mrs. Sherman's point, the Danville trustee of trust funds would have the documentation on this, as she does for the other trust funds, that may more explicitly speak to what this money could be spent on, and I'm sure before the deliberative session, somebody will have a conversation to see what other backup documentation there is, either from the trustees or from previous minutes that were done when this was established.
Any other comments on this article? Second call, any more comments on this article? Okay, yes, did I see a hand over here? No, I guess not. All right. Mr. Boyle, would you read Article, the next article, please?
Article 5, General Acceptance of Reports. Shall the voters of the Timberlane Regional School District accept reports of agents, auditors, and committees as written in the 2017 annual report? Majority vote required.
Any comments on this article? Okay, there's Article 6. Mr. Boyle, would you read that article, please?
Article 6, Artificial Turf Petition by John Sapier et al. Shall the district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 800,000 for the purpose of increasing athletic player safety and decreasing district operating costs by professionally installing an artificial turf surface to an existing sports playing field with a projected savings that will pay back this investment within five years. This will be a multi-purpose field supporting a host of district sports. It shall be made available for a fee to the outside parties when not in use by the district. For the purposes of generating additional revenue to further offset costs and shorten the time to maximize return investment, payments will be spread out over a term of eight years at a maximum interest rate not to exceed 4.75 percent, and shall be installed during the budget year. Majority vote required.
Point of order, maybe this is a question for the attorney, but because these, I think it takes a two-thirds vote, because the payments are spread out, I mean, again, I would love this to be a majority vote, but I think, when I talked to the Department of Education, they said because the payments were spread out, and you're asking the voters to make a longer obligation, it's going to be a two-thirds vote. I'm a pretty good, honest guy. Yeah, exactly.
So, I have to say, Jack, I wasn't clear how this thing operated. So are we raising and appropriating 800,000?
800,000, and it would be financed for the term of eight years.
So we wouldn't be raising and appropriating 800,000, you'd be getting authority to borrow a line of credit, credit up to 800,000, and try to achieve an interest rate along the lines of what's in here?
Yeah. I mean, that's a very conservative number, and the school district will have access to that loan.
So it's effectively a petition warrant article to borrow 800,000 dollars?
Yes.
Which, under New Hampshire law, makes it effectively a bond article?
But it's not, it's, according to the Department of Education, it's not a bond, because we're taking out a loan. It's not, this is a non-
Are you sure you spoke with the Department of Education?
Yeah, no, I'm positive. They called me back three times.
It's like calling your dentist to talk about your heart condition. So I would talk to DRA about-
I spoke to them as well.
Yeah, so I think, and I can refer to it, but it's RSA 338 is the statute, but it pretty much says that any loan in excess of $100,000 is treated like a bond, you have to have a public hearing, yada, yada, yada. So I hadn't even really thought about this until tonight. I was sort of confused, I thought you were borrowing the money, building the, I mean, raising the entire thing, building the field, and using the revenue for it to sort of rein, you know, reimburse the district. That's what I thought this was-
No.
-when I originally saw it. Because it wasn't clear that this was going to be a loan. There may, I'm going to look it up, but there may, there may be a fundamental flaw in how this is organized, if it truly is a request to borrow money. I have to look that up.
According, well, I did talk to DRA, and I did talk to the-
What did they say, Eric?
They said it gets treated as a long-term debt.
Yep.
But they said it's not a bond, and they also said it has to, because you're asking the district to obligate themselves for more than a year, an extended period of time, it's going to be a two-thirds vote. That's what, I mean, I read it to them.
Is it a two-thirds vote in an SB 2, or a-
They just said a two-thirds.
Let me look it up, but-
Sure.
Keep going. There's always other ways and other, you know, clever solutions, so let me look it up and get back to you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so I'd like to thank the Budget Committee and the School Board this evening, as well as the people that are here. I'm not going to ask you for your support, I'm going to beg you for your support, and I don't want you to do it for me. I want you to do it for the students and for the taxpayers. I've sat around this district for a very long time and seen the can get kicked down the road. I think if you speak to the coasters, it's not that they're disillusioned, it's that they've kind of given up hope. And I think I can say that equally for the students as well, as far as bringing our district up to speed. So I appreciate your consideration. So here's our, here's our field, and I'll be, I'll just give you one example of some of the challenges here. This is the retention pond over here, just so when we talk about it, we know where you are, but we have so many, we're limited in the number of fields that we have, and I'll give you one example. Here is the existing JV and freshman soccer field. As you can see, over here is the baseball field, the varsity baseball field, and over here is the girls' JV softball field. What happens is, they get done the season, the field is a train wreck, it snows out, and the next time the snow comes off of these fields, see the time of day, is when the snow comes off of them two weeks into the baseball and softball season. So it's not that the fields have been mismanaged, it's that they don't have time to recover. You could say the same thing, if you look down the bottom of the screen, you got two soccer fields sitting on the middle school softball diamond, you have field hockey up in the right-hand corner, right in the middle of the girls' varsity softball field. So those are some of the challenges that we have. The description of what I want to do, what I propose, is 80,000 square feet on the existing football field, it will, the turf will run edge to edge and about 10 feet beyond the end of the end zones. I chose the football field because it has lights, and the lights allows extended usage and increased revenue sources. The resource company that I've been dealing with is FieldTurf, and it really comes down to the quality of what you put down, is what you're going to get out of it, and these are the best people in the industry, it's what you see in Gillette Stadium. And it will be a multi-purpose and a multi-sport field. Why am I here? What are the advantages? First of all, student safety. Student safety, to me, is paramount. Short and long-term reductions of the operating costs, the ecological impact, consistency and improved field conditions, the economic revenue opportunities, enhanced performance and extended usage, and a positive financial impact to district towns. Many of the district towns use our assets, but they, I was on- Many of the district towns use our assets, but they, I was on the phone today with Atkinson, and they're like, "We don't have enough fields." On safety standpoint, really quick, you can look at a lot of studies, make sure you're looking at studies that have the latest technology fields, they're called level-four fields, and that's what, that's what we plan on putting in, or that's what this proposes to do. You have a reduction of forty-four percent of ACL injuries and a reduction of forty-three percent of concussions. Again, there are a lot of different types of product out there. What I would propose is a nine-pound-per-square-foot fill versus the lighter fills, which you can buy. You can save, you know, you could do this for six, seven hundred thousand dollars, but look at the difference. In a five-year study, about twenty percent lower incidence of total injuries, thirty-five to fifty-five percent lower incidence of substantial injuries, and anywhere between nineteen to twenty-six percent incidence of severe injuries. Ecological impact. We're in an unfortunate situation here at the Timberland Regional School District, but we can't hook up the town water. The current status, we're water short. We need to draw back on the amount of water usage that we have. We currently use seventy-one thousand gallons a day, and we need another seventy-one thousand gallons to water our fields adequately. The current irrigation system is overburdened and breaks down on a regular basis due to the burden on our natural resources. The inability to irrigate effectively comes at additional cost. I can't tell you how many times they go down, they lay up fertilizer, the next day, the irrigation system breaks down for two weeks. You've blown the money that it's costing fertilize, and then the grass burns out, and then you've got to spend money to bring it back. We just had to put in a new baseball infield on the varsity field because we ran out of water. That was about a ten thousand dollar cost. These are all what I consider to be soft costs, which we'll talk about in a minute. We have to put in to deal with this a retention pond at the cost of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. That doesn't include permitting and engineering or the maintenance. Fertilizer, we put a ton of fertilizer on the field. That's not really a good idea. That's not safe. It's not safe to do. And I would ask you to please look at the school board meeting of four, six, seventeen, starting at one hour and thirty-nine minutes. Jeff does, Jeffrey does a great job on his presentation, bringing some of these issues, ecological issues, to light. We have some other environmental concerns out back. As you know, you look at the map and take a drive around the pond, everybody should be concerned. So, what's the impact of putting down turf? We have a reduction of one to three million gallons of water a year if we put that field down. We can eliminate the retention pond. Less stress on our current system. Sprinkleheads won't go off in the middle of the marching band halftime show, and the proposed field is our number-one draw on water. Okay, right now, the football field, because of the very nature of the season and the amount of usage, you have the football team out there, you have the tornadoes coming in after that. It's the field that needs the most care, so it gets the most water. And it allows other fields, if we do this, it will allow other fields, not only in the, not only on campus, but within the district to rest. Other synergies to consider. Resting fields. If we put down this field, we'll get over an additional thousand hours of playing time. That will allow the recovery of our natural fields, both on campus and in the district, to recover, rest, and will cost less to maintain. Again, another soft cost. Early, early negative spring conditions. As I pointed out, these fields are overused, they have no time to recover, the snow comes off of them, and right now, lacrosse, they have to travel to indoor facilities. At the, the Boosters Club picks up that tab, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we pay for the busing. Men's soccer, men's baseball, they're in the gym right now. During the spring season, they wrap up athletic socks with duct tape, and that's how they practice. A lot of other schools send their kids off to indoor facilities, they bus them there. Legally, we're required to bus them if they have to practice. So, they would be able to go out on the field in the evening and have an actual practice because the turf drains so well. Graduation. We always resaw it before graduation, and we lay down carpet everywhere because it's fields beaten up by lacrosse, and we don't want our graduates and our administrators slipping and sliding in the mud out in the field. Another soft cost. It can be used all winter long. My son up at Pierce played baseball in February out on the turf. So, athletes could use this during the winter months, weather providing. With all due respect, this is a, this is a public hearing. Thank you. The opportunities for the district for youth sports, football, lacrosse, soccer, they're very excited about this. And opportunities for other organizations to compete. So, here are the numbers. One, an eight hundred thousand dollar cost divided out over eight years at four, at four percent, it's a hundred and four thousand dollars a year for eight years. Minus anticipated revenue of thirty thousand dollars gives you an annual cost of seventy-four thousand dollars. Minus sixty-five thousand dollars, that's maintenance, cutting, striping, fertilizing, irrigating, et cetera. Those numbers were based on thirty dollars an hour, which is all-in. That's the benefit package, that's taxes, that's retirement. And I confirmed these numbers with the administration, so I'm very confident that these numbers are extremely accurate. And I took the liberty of taking the cost of the retention pond and spreading it out over the cost of the eight years. So, like, now, there is five thousand dollars worth of maintenance you have to do to turf. So, I added that in, and you come up with a net gain of forty-seven hundred and forty-four dollars for the first eight years. Consider this. We'll be offsetting costs while at the same time improving student safety while enhancing our student experience. The money for maintenance immaterial are already in the budget. We, we can't take it out of the budget this year because we don't know if it will pass. And for the first year, those funds, that sixty-five thousand will be unexpended. Then I'm just going to go over here. So, revenue opportunities. I don't blame anyone in this district for being apprehensive about potential revenue. So, let's just take a moment to say, we don't get a single dime of revenue, even though you look at Haverhill, you look at Exeter, you look at Bedford, a lot of them are tracking around thirty, thirty thousand plus a year. Take all the soft costs out of it, because you really can't determine what those numbers are, right? That will impact the district, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, divided by the four towns, is sixty-two fifty. That's less than a half a cup of coffee per household for the first eight years. Then after that, the turf is paid for, you've made enough money to replace it at about half the cost, about three hundred thousand dollars. So, is our student safety and environmental stewardship worth a half a cup of coffee a year? I would argue it is. Here, on the left, I won't go down this, this is the annual cost, which I just kind of showed you, but again, let's talk about soft costs for just a moment. Savings of resting the fields, and that's in-town and within the district. Savings on the maintenance of the retention pond, savings on where and here on town fields, and the potential rental costs of fields, of indoor fields and busing when the fields can't be used. So, that's my presentation, and what I'm going to do here, because I feel that a million questions, I'm done. A million questions over the last week, and the number-one question was, why can't varsity soccer, ladies soccer, and of course, my daughter, fourteen-years soccer, captain of the soccer team here at the high school, she's not talking to me right now. But let's be clear. You can play youth soccer, middle-school soccer, JV soccer, and freshman soccer can be played on this field, but because of the dimensions, you can't play varsity soccer. So, I said, okay, what are the alternatives? Option one would be to turf the soccer field for eight hundred thousand, it's basically the same price, with an additional three hundred thousand dollars for lights. Without the lights, you don't have that extended play. So, the cost of it's one point one million dollars. Option two, to reconfigure the track area at a cost of approximately one point five million to two million dollars. What's the scope of the work? You have to remove the bleachers on the visitor's side and then replace them after you're done. You have to widen the track and then resurface it. You have to move the lights on the visitor's side. You've got a backfield behind the bleachers, and then what happens to the ladies varsity softball field and the tennis courts? They're, they're in direct fire of moving everything back. So, it's, it's a, it's a costly proposition. And what I would say to you is that the difference between turfing, between option one and option two, let's call it a half a million plus, but the nice thing about option one is that you get an extra playing surface. Now, I'm not saying we should do any of this, but I'm just saying, that was my number-one question that I got during the week, and I say you do my best, in my opinion, you can do it once, you service everybody but varsity men's soccer, and that can be part of the strategic plan down the road, women's and men's varsity soccer. Everybody else gets accommodated on this. And then, I'm done, but here, there are some concerns around cancer. I put up some, some places where you can go to. The EPA, that statement on the bottom, what you find is that many of the studies suggest, and the EPA suggests, and the study from Washington State in conjunction with Washington State University, is that these, these artificial turfs actually reduction, show a reduction in cancer rates over natural turf, over natural fields. So, thank you very much for your time. I, yeah, sure.
Now, are there any questions about this presentation and on this article? Comments or concerns? Yep? One over here.
Thank you. So, just a couple questions. So, Jack, you're talking about a possible payback in like eight years?
That, that would be the, that would be, the payback actually happens in five to six, until you get to your break-even point. That's considering, you know, that you have that revenue stream. The loan, the loan would be, and they offer loans, up to eight years, that loan will be fully paid off in eight years. The life expectancy of the turf is ten to twelve, so in those years of that additional savings, it basically goes towards replacing the turf, which is about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand, because you're not doing all the site work associated with it. It's kind of the way the math works.
Okay, so, but a payback in five years at no more than four point seven five percent interest rate is around two hundred thousand dollars a year. So, does this, the way this is worded, it implies that if the business administrator can't, can't calculate a payback in five years at two hundred thousand dollars a year, then that money doesn't get expended?
Well, the way, I guess I'm a little confused with that, Peter. And what I basically am saying is that the turf, in all likelihood, in five to six years, you'll, you'll save enough in what you normally would expend with the revenue stream coming in. That justifies paying for itself, but what I'm, what I, the way I wrote the warrant was that we would take out an eight-year loan, so we wouldn't be whacking the taxpayers over the head with some big one-time or two-time nut. So, basically, we would buy the turf, take out an eight-year note against it at four percent. You know, I put in four point five. All my numbers are extremely conservative. Even the price is extremely conservative, because I don't want anyone looking at me saying, "You said this, and then that happened," right?
I'm not saying otherwise. All I'm asking is, if the, the business administrator, who does all the finance work here, you know, assuming this passes, if he, if his calculations show that we are not going to be able to pay it back in five, within five years, is this guarantees, because this is a statement, it's not a-
Oh, it's-
So, does, I, I believe that means we don't go out and get that loan because it, because he can't satisfy this, this citizen's petition.
Well, what it does is, it, I believe the wording is, it says, oh, what's the word? I just had it on the tip of my tongue, projected. But what it does is it obligates, if this was to pass, we would have a hundred and four thousand dollar note approximately, up or down, you know, a few dollars, for eight years. And then after that, it's perpetual care. After that, you don't spend another dime on this field except for the five thousand dollars a year to maintain it, what, where you're spending right now seventy thousand in perpetuity. So, basically, this is a warrant to buy the field and spread out the payments over eight years, as to not, to so much impact the district.
I was just going to ask, can you put that warrant article back on the screen? I'm starting to follow what you're asking.
There you go. Yeah, with, with, with the projected savings, with the projected savings that will pay back this investment within five years. So, it's projected. So, I even said in the, in the presentation, five to six years, because again, and this is, look, a football field is a football field, and what you'll find is that almost anyone that does this says, "We have our return on our," sometimes it can be four, depending. Now, what happens, and I can tell you, a town, I forget who told me this, but they were talking to someone in a town in Massachusetts, and they said, "Our residents are questioning, we didn't get a single dime of revenue." And they didn't get a single dime of revenue because the field is used twenty-four-seven. They, they don't have, and, and what I said is, isn't that a great problem to have? Isn't that, doesn't that then in fact justify it? That you're using this asset so much and it's so valuable to the community that you don't have time to get that revenue stream? Again, if I have to wordsmith this at the deliberative session, I'll be more than happy to do it, but it's to buy this field and spread out the payments over eight years. And I have just watched these fields deteriorate and get abused, and we've done nothing to them for twenty years, and I think now is the time. I'm just going to, I'm just going to keep trying.
Any other questions?
Phil Sherwood, Atkinson, I've been incentivized on my part through a purchase of a beer that I'll keep this short, so I will keep this short. I just have a couple of questions. Maybe you said it and I missed it, my apologies, but what is this proposed turf actually made of? What does it consist of chemically?
Sure. It's, and I did bring in the gentleman from FieldTurf, and I can bring him at deliberative session. This is the state-of-the-art, best caliber. It's made out of, you know, it's, it's plastic, it's got the rubber little granules that are recycled tires. It is the same turf that's in Gillette Stadium. I could have, you know, I'm constrained by time, so I could have gotten into all, but it is nine pounds per square foot. It is, it has the most fill of any turf in the marketplace. I went very, very high-end. If it's the pleasure of the school board to-
All right, then, then, so, just the high-end stuff also has arsenic, also has lead, also has cadmium, also has zinc, just so you know. Do you know what the average temperature in the field is? Say if it's like ninety-eight degrees, what the temperature in the field will be with this AstroTurf?
I would, I would-
We talked about the safety of players.
Sure.
I'm thinking about this, Joe.
Yeah, I'd be the first to admit that in the summertime, in the dog days of summer, it gets warm. It gets extremely hot. I'm not going to deny that.
The manufacturers say on average it's thirty-seven degrees warmer.
But what I'm going to tell you is, we don't have high school sports during the summertime. In addition to that, I mean, I think Angelo goes through great pains to make sure that his athletes are hydrated. They take a course, don't they, now, the coaches and the students about being hydrated and being very guided on temperatures? The other thing that I'll tell you is, I want to just read this from the EPA. Let me get my glasses out here.
Well, why are you getting glasses on? I just want to say, I'm for AstroTurf, but I've lived in a community where I purchased AstroTurf, and then kids started dropping, and then they realized there was light in it, and then they had to pick up the AstroTurf, and once you go AstroTurf, you have to stay AstroTurf. You burn the base. And so, that's the only thing, that's what I was asking.
No, it's-
Getting the kids out of pesticides and all that.
This is, this is a public hearing, everything should be vented, I totally agree with you. But let me read you this quick note from the EPA. Eliminated non-cancer hazards and cancer risks for all the evaluated scenarios were within the U.S. EPA guidelines. In addition, cancer risk levels for users of synthetic turf, synthetic turf fields were comparable to or lower than those associated with natural soil fields. For the most, for most scenarios, cancer risks were higher on natural-soiled fields. The use of synthetic turf fields containing recycled rubber infill would not result in any unacceptable risks or hazards to adults or children under the United States EPA Risk Assessment Guide. Assessment Guidelines. What I would tell you is go do, go do the research. I put these up here, and whether it's New York or California, these are pretty left of center states and Washington State. Go do the research, but make sure you're not looking at reports, make sure you're looking at studies. And make sure that the studies are recent, because the turf has changed dramatically. When I played, it was asphalt with an indoor/outdoor carpet on top, maybe that's why I'm a little dizzy these days. But, you know, it has just changed dramatically. So I, I appreciate your concerns. It has its drawbacks, but look at the retention pond, which we pull out of. Look at our, look at what's around that retention pond. Look at the fertilizer we put down on the fields. Those are much larger environmental concerns, I think, at least for me as a dad. And trust me, my kids are out of the district. I'll be moving to that baseball field in the sky pretty soon. I want this to be in the taxpayers' best interest and the students' best interest.
Yes, ma'am.
Jen Silva Atkinson, can you tell me what kind of maintenance goes into the turf and is our district going to be able to upkeep that?
Yeah, sure.
Equipment for that?
With, yeah, with the, with the purchase of the turf comes the two pieces of equipment that it takes to maintain it. Basically, it's a fluffer and a, for lack of a better term, a spreader, okay? And that comes lock, stock, and barrel when you buy the turf. It needs to be done according to the gentleman that I had the other night, and I was kind of hoping we'd get to that, but we were constrained by time. You have to do that three, four times. Now, they have a whole regiment, there are all kinds of things you can do, but he said if you do this three, four times a year with those two pieces of equipment, that's the general maintenance. And I have that $5,000 figure in there at $30 an hour, and that's what they, that is their number at $30 an hour, which coincidentally coincides with our maintenance crew average.
What about civil clearing?
Well, that would be up to the district, whether they would want to get one of those, you know, brushes to brush it off. But we really don't have a winter sport per se that, that would be utilized by that, but I could see in certain case scenarios when there's nothing on the field, students going, I can tell you this too. The other thing is, my son was playing up at Syracuse this year, we had a torrential downpour, it came down in sheets for 15, 20 minutes, there was an inch of water on the field. 10 minutes after that downpour, they were all playing, and you would have never known it rained out because the drainage underneath us is so good. So, you know, how many games have we gotten canceled 20 minutes before a game because of rain and we bust the kids out there? And oh, by the way, our students are already playing on this in Bedford and Exeter. And go sit at Bedford during the championship tournament and watch the revenue stream that comes in. I'm not going to make promises here to you tonight, but my experience is, there, there's revenue to be had, whether it's 30, 35, or 25. I don't think the number's going to be zero, but under worst-case scenario, it's a half a cup of coffee.
Any other questions on this article?
I'd just like to thank everyone for their time and consideration and patience. I know I've driven a few of you guys nuts, so thank you.
After this meeting, there'll be a special Budget Committee will meet immediately to finalize the proposed budget for the deliberative session. Then the School Board will meet subsequently to recommend action on each of the warrant articles. Just a reminder, on Thursday, February 8th at 7:00 PM in the high school gym, gymnasium, will be the deliberative session. Voter check-in for the deliberative session opens at 6:00 PM at the high school cafeteria. Thank you all for attending.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to just correct one thing. We were talking about revenue and the assessments out, and our, like, our revenue projections were a million over where our budget number was for last year in terms of what we were assessing the districts, and in fact, the actual assessment, and our proposed assessment are only about $742,000 up art, including all of the, all the things that go into the assessment, retain tax, taxation, and impact fees. So I wanted to just make that point prior to the meeting closing. That's a little remote.
Okay. Any other comments before we close? All right, we close this public hearing at 9:17. Thank you very much for coming and spending your time with us.